This meeting of the council of the village of Glendale will now come to order. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin with noting that we do have a quorum under Rule 13 of the Rules of Council. A majority of council members constitutes a quorum. We have four out of the six members of council present here. We will not be able to waive three reads since that requires a three-quarters vote or five members of council. But we do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, can you confirm a quorum?
I confirm the presence of a quorum.
And we have an agenda that has been circulated, and there's been no objection to it, so that is the agenda we will use. We will begin with the minutes of the meeting of September 12, 2022, regular council meeting, and these minutes have been circulated. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We turn now to public comment, and I ask if anybody here wishes to address council.
My name is Kevin Parish, longtime resident in the village of Glendale at 176th of Washington. I've come today to address issues that we started off at the beginning of this year addressing, and we haven't got any further. That would be the remarks of Mr. Bogart at the beginning of the year that reflected racist views, slander about residents and a council member. Mayor, you haven't moved on this, but this issue cannot be an executive decision. Whenever you have a moral integrity issue that reflects badly on this council body or on the village of Glendale, you have to bring that issue before the council as a whole. You have failed to do that, meaning that the oath that you took to protect the moral integrity of this village, you are not protecting it. Also, we have a commission, a public records commission, that has failed to act on the terrible record-keeping that we have here, even after you guys did not even have a meeting in two years. You had one this year, and you haven't put in any protocol in adjusting our public records. Whenever we have an issue of public record retention with contracts that we have with contractors related to, especially our water issues, and we do not have or have lost not only the body of the contract, but we lost the sign-in list for the pre-contract meeting. We lost the reports that was part of the agreement that the contractor would make and submit each month with a list of the hours for employees, inspection reports, financial reports. Now, who loses a whole folder? I can understand losing one item, but when all the items are lost in a contract, that puts us at risk. We have taxes coming up soon, and there should have been a kickback for the amount of material that was left not used according to the certificate of certification that was issued for the Phase 1 sanitary sewer project. I've come before this public meeting to put in documentation constantly, facts of what is happening here in this village. These are not things that are made up. Couple of months ago, Mayor, you mentioned the fact of the dismissal of the Parish versus the village of Glendale. We did dismiss that, only because we're going for something a lot bigger, which is criminal. These are criminal elements that are in this village of Glendale. Now, what surprises me is that when we dismissed it, I received no bill, so that means that Glendale paid my part of the charges that were part of the Court of Claims and Court of Appeals and their part. I don't think I've lost if they paid my part, but evidently, they want to keep the amount of money that they are spending and wasting a secret. I imagine that's why we didn't have a legitimate financial report. You had reports that were, had groups of items that wasn't itemized to see exactly where our expenditures were.
You have had them in it.
That's not a financial report. Do we have this level of incompetency in handling our business, and nobody seems to think that that's odd or out of the regular? I guess so. But anyway, for the record, I'd like to state that we voted you guys in. You were voted in candidates. We can vote you out. We don't have to wait till November. So if you can't do the job, maybe we should start looking for replacements. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address council? Hearing none, we will go to our old business part, and the first item is ordinance 2022-04, and that is an ordinance inserting Chapter 154.59 in the Village of Glendale Code of Ordinances, establishing regulations related to residential and commercial signage in the village of Glendale as recommended by the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission. This ordinance has a long history with us. We have been proceeding very carefully because it involves the law of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, and it's a complicated area, and it's one in which the Supreme Court has seen fit to, in the middle of our consideration, issue another decision. So the ordinance was removed, had been tabled, was removed from the table with revised language from the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission last month, and as amended, it came off the table. I suggested that that could be considered a first read. However, we did not make a motion to amend the ordinance as it was before council. And so, in order to just be completely upfront with everyone and, you know, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to ask for a motion to amend this ordinance as per the revisions suggested by the planning commission, as indicated in the attachment to the proposed ordinance as it's been distributed. So I would like a motion for that amendment and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
There is a question.
Yes.
With this amended ordinance, is this a first read?
Yes, we're going to treat, I'm going to treat it as a first read. Any other question? Yes.
Mayor, it's actually on page seven of the, it's page 11 of the full packet, but it's page seven of the amendment. It discusses temporary signs. It's M as in Mary, M1.
Okay, temporary signs, yes.
Am I reading this correctly? It would be nine. Each sign cannot exceed four square feet, and you would, am I reading that you could have up to nine of those? Two-by-twos?
I want to make sure I'm in the right area here. There are several different districts where we regulate signage.
What page is it, Will?
Page seven of the attachment.
Page seven of the amendment, but I think it's page 11 of the total handing.
There will, what the amended ordinance does is, it allows for nine square feet in the business district and for business use, non-residential uses in residential districts, so for mostly schools and churches. In residential districts, it is a four-foot, four-square-foot limitation.
Okay. I.
And that's in section O1B, I believe. Yeah.
Yes.
Eight.
Or 12 of the packet, page 12 in the packet.
Will, so you could.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the language that you're referring to, temporary signs not requiring permit, which are nine, four square feet or less, under M1, I know I'm bouncing this back.
Right.
That language has been struck from the draft.
Okay.
So if you look at the language that's there in the margin, in that gray bar on the right-hand side, that says deleted.
Oh, that was deleted.
That's been deleted.
So that was just included to show what changes were made.
Okay.
When this is passed, a final clean version will appear.
So this is the reason why I'm asking for a motion to amend based upon the version that's been attached here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of amending the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So that will be the first read of the amended ordinance. We have another ordinance, ordinance 2022-54, an ordinance amending the job description of the fire chief for the village of Glendale and declaring an emergency. This was introduced last month, September 12, and that was the first read of this ordinance. The job disposition description, the draft proposed position description is attached to the ordinance, and as Exhibit A, I would invite any questions or comments about it now, and hopefully we'll be in a, we can be in a position to respond to them and consider, you know, vote on this at the next meeting.
I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have several questions. Let me just be very brief. I'm very much concerned. Firstly, let me say that I have nothing but praise and admiration for our personnel in the fire department. My concern is with the extensive requirements in this position description for an employee of the village, and I would be expressing these concerns were it any other employee within the village. So I don't want my comments to be perceived in any way as a concern about the quality of the personnel there or any of the persons there.
Believe it or not, this version is shorter than the one we started with, but I invite you to indicate how we can be even more efficient.
Okay, so we have what are, in essence, strategic planning parts embedded, in my view, in this position description. For instance, the general purpose, core values, essential functions, and all of that. Core competencies could certainly be a lot briefer. I just find it, the required knowledge, skills, and abilities, my goodness, you couldn't get Superman or Superwoman to meet all of this. So I am very concerned that we're, we would be, we as council would be imposing this job description on an employee in the fire department, and what would we then be imposing on similarly situated employees within the village?
Do you have some specific things that you would like to cut? I mean, I'm open to hearing it, really.
Absolutely. I'm not here to edit right now, but I would cut general purpose. I would cut core values. I would cut and shorten essential functions to simply describe the purpose of the fire department and its essential functions. But I would definitely cut core values. These core values, as I recall, have not even been agreed to by council. So why are we then imposing them on the fire chief and a part-time employee at that? I would reduce core competencies, and I won't spend the time now, Mayor Lofty. Rather, I will, if you're inviting me to send comments in writing, I'll be glad to do so. However, I just have not done it because so many times I've sent written comments, which take time, and they were, in essence, rejected. So if I do send written comments, I'd like them to be, to change the outcome of this document, or else I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Okay, this is the second reading of this ordinance. May I ask, does anyone else have comments or concerns about this ordinance?
I have a comment. I'm under the impression that we have modeled this job description from other fire departments. We did not, it's my understanding that we took an accepted description, a job description, and modified it to meet Glendale, but essentially, this is what is accepted in the industry. That's my understanding.
I have a different understanding, and there may be one or two places with this, but this detail, this extensive detailed job description is rare for a full-time employee, much less a part-time employee. And having worked for a labor union, and the largest one in the country at that, I am very, very sensitive when I see all of this language and requirements in a job description because I automatically think of what does it take to satisfy performance? What does it take not to satisfy performance? So we can go down this road of discussing it more, but I am not willing to accept this as it is.
Okay, this, the position description, to answer Ms. Mosenko's question, as I understand it, it was taken from the current, you know, employee manual and then substantially reworked by others.
Revised down.
Yes. And we did cut it down, but, you know, I'm, I don't know how much further I want to go down that road, but we will, we'll have to give that some consideration.
Mr. Mayor, as I recall, in the year 2017, it could have been 2016, council looked at the job description for the fire chief and revised it at that time, and this wasn't in there.
Okay, I will, I'll look into that. I thought this was the, this was based on the existing job description for the fire chief. We then made substantial changes in it. What we did back in 2016, I believe, was take the position from being a part-time position and make it a full-time position. Since then, we've concluded that it really is better off as a part-time position, so we've taken it back down to part-time, and that's why we went to the, made the effort to revise the job description. I mean, most of it is, most of the description is, it doesn't relate to the amount of time somebody would be spending anyway. It's about their abilities, their ability to lead, their leadership capabilities, their firefighting capabilities, that sort of thing, and what attributes and traits we think they should have. But we'll, you know, we'll take a look at it and see if there's more.
And as I recall, in 2016, we also revised the Glendale Code, the ordinance, to align it better, as well as revise the employee handbook description for the fire chief. So it was two documents which were modified.
That could be. That could be. I know that when we did it, we did, we did change it, we made that basic change from part-time to full-time. Whether we made some other changes to go with it, I can't say. Okay, that is a, right now, that's a second read for this ordinance. We come to ordinance 2022-55, an ordinance revising the transaction fee for credit card payments to the village of Glendale, Glendale Mayor's Court, and Glendale Utility Department, and declaring an emergency. Now, despite the fact that we are saying it's, we're declaring an emergency, that just means it goes into effect immediately after it's enacted, and we don't have to wait 30 days for that. Now, you still have to go through three reads to pass the ordinance. We don't have, we would need five members here to pass it. We don't have that, so this stands as a first read of this ordinance. David, can you just give us a little, a little bit of introduction to the ordinance?
Certainly. So over the summer, council passed a credit card transaction fee of $3 per transaction. After working with our credit card processing company to implement that, it became apparent that it is not a, it's not a viable option as far as assessing a fee is concerned. So their suggestion and what's highlighted here in this ordinance is a percentage fee that's based on what's referred to as the effective rate, which is the amount of fees that we pay divided by the gross dollar amount in sales per month. So we are around 1.75% on a monthly basis. So this is, in essence, a more reliable calculation because we will recuperate what we pay on a percentage basis monthly in credit card fees with this transaction. So this is written to enact a fee that is more, equates more closely to what we actually pay in our monthly.
So do I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, so that stands then as the first read. We turn now to Resolution 2022-29, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission of Hamilton County and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. And David, can you explain this one a little bit?
Sure. This is a typical, typical legislation for our October meeting. The Hamilton County Auditor forwards to us, and it's attached to the packet, the copy in the packet, what's referred to as the amounts and rates, and that includes the upcoming, including proposed levies, so the 2.5 mil property tax levy is listed on that document, and requires council to certify that those are, in fact, our levies. We are, in fact, pursuing the eight-and-a-half renewal and the 2.5 additional, and verifying that to the county auditor.
Okay, and since this is a resolution, it does not require three reads, so I'm going to ask for a motion for this resolution? Yes. Well, can we do the, can we get it on the table first?
Okay.
Motion for the resolution.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, question?
David? Can you just please review that summary data in Schedule A to assure us that, are there any differences in the gross proceeds or anything? Is there any difference from the estimates we've been working with all along?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Where in here does one conclude or draw the inference that this is for the, either the 8.5 renewal or the 2.5 addition?
So if you look under, we're about a quarter of the way down the page, there's the header for Schedule B, levies outside 10-mil limitation. Their first table is current expense levies. You'll see proposed November 8, 2022, period of time, four years, mils, 8.5. And then down at the bottom is the, the last row on that table is the 2.5.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further discussion, questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For Resolution 2022-29, Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth. Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes our business. We're turning now to reports, and I'll begin with the mayor's report. There were no births reported to the village last month. We had a death, actually, two deaths now. One was Sister Priscilla Wright, who passed away on September 11 at the age of 88. She had been with the Sisters of the Transfiguration. Her death was noted last month, but we did not have all the details on it, so we can consider this the official report on her, on her death. We also just learned today of the passing of a longtime resident, Clyde Sterns, who passed away on September 28 at the age of 87. And he has been much, he was much beloved in the village, and he shall be missed. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for these two. May they rest in peace. Turning now to other matters in the village, we had a big event, which was our street fair on September 24. The, and not only did we have the street fair, which is a return of an event that the village loves every year, and COVID had been getting in the way, but several other organizations decided to join the folks in doing the street fair. So we, at Harry Whiting Brown, they had a yard sale. The library had a book sale. The Glendale Garden Club and the Glendale Urban Forestry Board had a session at Rogan Park Gazebo where they, among other things, they showed off a plan for the Glendale Arboretum, which we've had reported to council before. And there was the dedication of a plaque by yours truly to the donors, to the Glendale Quiet Zone. Oh, and finally, lest I forget, the Merchants of Glendale Exhibition at the Depot Museum opened up also on September 24. It is a history of the, of businesses in Glendale, done in a very It is a history of the, of businesses in Glendale, done in a very interesting way. They have taken each building, kind of mapped out its, its history. So it's well worth, well worth seeing. We have, on October 8th, we have another multiple celebration day coming up, and that is the return of the beloved Pancake Breakfast, which will be held at Town Hall from 7:00 a.m. in the morning, to those who really can't get, can't wait to get their pancakes, but it will go all the way to noon. And then, from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock that day, Barktoberfest will be held for all of our animal friends at the Harry Whiting Brown Grounds. We also have, after some questions came into the office, made a village decision that trick-or-treating in the Village of Glendale will be held on October 31st, that is a Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There was some concern, some discussion, well, why not have it on Sunday, the 30th? We, couple of thoughts on that. First of all, they're both school nights, the 30th and the 31st, so you don't gain much there, but also, virtually all of our neighbors, all of our neighbors whom we contacted were doing it on the 31st. We had one rather difficult situation where Glendale was an outlier and did the Halloween on, on the date that nobody else was doing it. We were flooded with trick-or-treaters that day. God bless them, but it, it was a real, you know, sort of a difficulty, difficult situation for the village. And of course, coming up on November 8th is the election, and Glendale will have two ballot, two levies on the ballot, one a renewal of our 8.5 mil levy, and the other, an additional levy of 2.5 mils. There will be more information about that coming later. The polls will be open here at Town Hall, and we have two precincts, precincts in Glendale, A and B. Don't worry, whatever precinct you're in in Glendale, you vote here. So, so that will be on, on October 8th. And that will be, that was the reason why we will have our November meeting, which will be on November 7th, downstairs in the council chambers, because they'll be up here setting up for the election. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our administrator for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. The necessary equipment for the Quiet Zone restoration is on order. We should have that within the next few weeks here in the village. We've submitted the necessary paperwork to CSX to get the work scheduled. Of course, they have a timeline, we have ours, so we're, we're waiting to hear confirmation from them on when that will be taking place, but we'll keep more information flowing as we get it. Road resurfacing is underway. Crews came out and put out gravel to fill any kind of low spots or patches in the streets. They will come back out in the next two weeks to spray coat that with a sealant, so those roads will be in good repair for 15 to 20 years, depending on, on the life of that, that product. We are underway with the transition to Huntington for the village's checking accounts. Had our first meeting with them last week, and it's going very well. We're very excited for some of the things that they'll be able to do for us. Additionally, we are in, in the middle of transitioning billing software. We have a training scheduled in November for our utility billing software. That will be coming up, and hopefully, by the turn of the new year and the new water meters, residents will be, have a lot more convenience when it comes to paying their utility bills. Regarding the water meter project, we're hopeful to have a bid opening near the end of October on that. More information will be available through the Utilities Committee Report and at the meeting tomorrow afternoon. So that's been coming up. And then additionally, the third quarter financial report will be distributed to council once we get September in the books, so probably within the next week or two. If there are any other questions? That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call for the committee reports?
Okay. I'm going to call committees, who committee's chair is here. Fire committee, please.
Thank you. Fire committee did not meet in, in September. We have our next meeting scheduled for November 17 at 4:00 p.m. I have a reminder to council and village officials that we have the special class GFD 101 is now scheduled for November 5. You will get a formal invitation from either the chief or the captain on this, but it is, mark your calendar, Saturday, November 5, starting at 9:00 in the morning, and it's everything you wanted to know about the Glendale Fire Department, from the command structure to how emergency responses happen, training, and, and then even a little bit of hands-on training for the village officials who attend. And this is all elected officials and non-elected officials, like David, so you're, you're all going to get an invitation to that. And last, before I turn it over to Captain Lerman, do you need any more volunteers from anyone in this room for the pancake breakfast? Just sing out, but I'll turn it over to you to fill everyone in.
Thank you. Yes, we would love to have all of you attend the pancake breakfast, and if any of you are willing to flip pancakes or whatever you can do to help fill coffee cups or top off coffee vats, we'd appreciate it. So thank you for that. Our fire report will be out in the next day or two. We just had a few more items that we had to get completed, so that report will be up to date, and we can send that out. We did just complete a lengthy, in-depth promotional process for lieutenant, so we were happy to promote three lieutenants this month, and we moved one fire sergeant to lieutenant, so we now have four lieutenants. It was about a four-week-long process and different steps they had to go through with that. Wanted to mention, with the incident that happened at Princeton last Friday, although we were not, the fire department was not on the initial dispatch, we were able to staff our station with volunteers that came from their full-time job, have a full crew on station within about 25 minutes from that initial dispatch. So if that incident escalated or other incidents happened throughout the county, we were able to cover our own district and our mutual aid partners if the need arose. But as we know, that incident, thankfully, was, was nothing major.
Captain Lerman, excuse me one second. Didn't the department just have, I mean, wasn't it just a couple of weeks ago you had active shooter training?
We did. That was earlier this spring, but yes, we did, that our folks attended that, so.
Yes, that kind of came in handy.
We were prepared for that, yeah. And then another thing that I wanted to note, next week, you're going to see a big trailer parked out in our apron, our old apron facing east. We're going to have another trailer come in from the state of Ohio to provide more fire training for our folks. I'm also going to invite you and the council. What that training is, is for drive-views training. Folks can get behind the wheel of a simulated fire truck, a simulated ambulance, and we can put them in stressful scenarios behind the wheel, so to speak, in a controlled lab to prepare them for any driving conditions that they would encounter on the road as if it was in real life. So if you see a big trailer, that's what it is. It'll be fun, so, for our folks, and then again, I'll, I'll send that out if you folks would be interested in doing that with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Laws and claims, please.
Laws Committee did not meet in September. We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 18th at 4:00, and I'd like to thank everyone for responding as to their availability. I will email the administrative office tomorrow and ask them to post the notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Police committee, please.
Police committee did meet on September 19th, and we had a busy meeting. We're going to need to have another one in October. So the, the minutes are, the draft minutes are posted online. Briefly, here, we, we discussed Mayor's Court revising, reviewing the fees and possibly revising them, updating the fees compared to other municipalities in Hamilton County. We also discussed the Ohio's ordinance, H, Ohio HB 172, which allows consumer-grade fireworks in the state of Ohio. We discussed opting out of that, and Solicitor Ryan was there, and she's working on drafting up a new ordinance that we can discuss in the next committee meeting. And we briefly reviewed the International Property Maintenance Code and some other personnel items. And I will be in touch later, probably later this week, about an upcoming follow-up meeting, committee meeting. And on to the chief.
Thank you. My police report and Mayor's Court report has been sent out. There are two things I'd like to highlight that aren't on that list. I was able to hand out two Officer of the Month awards, one for July Sergeant Lee, Sergeant Barber, and one for August, which was Officer Lee and Officer Barber's incident.
Chief, do you want to try using, you know, Scott's mic there?
In Officer Barber's incident, he responded to a mutual aid call in Woodland. They had a large fight. There was a male subject involved who was stressed and wasn't calming down or anything. Officer Barber was able to de-escalate him, get him calmed down, even took him to McDonald's to get him something to eat because he was hungry, and was able to get him home without incident, without any trauma or anything like that. In August, Officer Lee responded to a incident in Forest Park where there was a juvenile subject struck in a crosswalk. Officer Lee was listening to the radio and was able to apprehend the hit-skip vehicle that struck the young boy. To the best of our knowledge at this point, that young boy is still alive. The driver was just indicted in those, in that crime and will be going to court. One more thing, we are putting together a coffee with a cop somewhere here in the village, probably, hopefully, we'll try the Bluebird. That will be hopefully occurring later on in the month or early November.
Okay, Chief, I'm sorry, I have to call you out on this. You committed the unforgivable sin of a newspaper man. You buried the lead. You had an active shooter incident at, at Princeton. You need to give us a little report there.
The incident in Princeton was a hoax, thank God. We were able to clear the building in probably 15 minutes to a half an hour. And at that point, Sharonville had some other information sources and everything, and some red flags that had popped up in the incident where we were able to confirm that it, it was a hoax. At that point, we started a reunification process to get all the kids back with their parents that had showed up. So we, out of the whole thing, we learned a lot of positives and a lot of negatives that we are taking forward as a police department in redoing our policies and our procedures for lockdown drills and active shooter drills in Glendale. We started with Bethany today, where we did a lockdown drill with them. We'll be doing another lockdown drill and some training at St. Gabe's and Glendale here in the near future.
Okay, I'm just going to add to that a little bit. A few days after that incident, I was at a meeting with Superintendent Tom Burton of the Princeton City School System. He had nothing but praise for all of the law enforcement people and other emergency personnel who came to Princeton and helped with, helped to just assess the situation, confirm that it was a hoax, do so in a very professional and business-like way, and then manage the students as they, and parents, as, as they were united with one another and taken, taken home. Of course, school was canceled for the rest of the day. So it was, there are a lot of positive results to come out of this terrible, what could have been a very terrible incident. So Chief, on behalf of the village, thank you. Thank you for your guise. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor or Chief, I have a follow-up question, and again, I very much appreciate what you were doing that day as well. My question relates to the news reports that evening and the next day of similar hoax surfacing around the same time in school, in large school districts around the state of Ohio. That's one question I'd like you to comment on. And secondly, I think I heard the, either the county prosecutor's office or the state attorney general's office speaking of an in-depth investigation and enforcement of the law to the fullest extent when they find the, what caused that. Are we participating in those investigations?
Those investigations, we are not. That is being handled by Sharonville Police Department. I am unaware of anything with the prosecutor's office or the attorney general's office at this point. As far as it being in other schools and throughout the state of Ohio, yes. It happened at other, probably five or six other schools within the state of Ohio. It also happened in other states, multiple schools in other states all around. We've been informed that it was a TikTok challenge that was put out. One of the, one of the things that raised red flags was when the gentleman or whoever made the phone call, it seemed to be the same phone call going out to everyone. The phone call to Princeton, the room number given was not right. So, yes, it, it did go out to multiple locations, like I said, multiple states. As far as the turnout that we had, turnout was incredible. There were probably 150 to 200 different law enforcement agencies that, that were there that day. The FBI was in Sharonville or Evendale doing training. They stopped what they were doing and came over and assisted. There were agencies from all over, DEA, task force was there, marshal's office as far out. I saw Corain on the west side, and there were people from the east side that were all over. It was incredible, the turnout that we had.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
Public Buildings did not meet in September, and David, I'll get in touch with you because we'll meet with, need to meet with Tom probably in November.
For budget.
Get ready for the winter budget. That's all, Becky.
Thank you. Utilities, please.
Utilities did not meet in December either. However, we are scheduled to meet tomorrow at 3:30 p.m., and that will be to look at the specs for the soon-to-be-purchased smart water meter system and other subjects regarding the finances of the utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
I have no report.
Okay. Mr. Treasurer?
I forwarded the summary for our investments to council, so you should have that in your email box. And let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. We have received reports of the general checking, certification for the payment of certain bills, and enterprise checking, certification for the payment of certain bills. Do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of these reports?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Go move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. I'm not going to ask. We're adjourned. I'm not going to ask moving, I'm just.